Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Shave. It's Wednesday, May 24th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, and I call the Aberdeen City Council meeting to order. Deputy City Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Ellis? Francie?
Here.
Dakin?
Here.
Ketchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Carachini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you. We'll excuse Councilmember Mackey tonight.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to excuse Councilmember Mackey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Will Violet Morrison lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One, two, three, God, be peaceful with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, Councilmember Mackey is on business.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Mackey is with us now on Zoom.
On tonight's agenda, there is an addition for council to consider that was emailed to them, and that is item number D4, which is a request for public works staff to work with our MESCO to submit a CFY grant request. So I move we approve the agenda with that item added. Also...
Motion was made seconded to approve the agenda with that item added. Is there any other additions or deletions?
I just wanted to make one change, if I may. Under item E, the ordinances and resolutions, I would like to move that to follow F, public hearings, because we're holding a public hearing on that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the agenda. Did you do that?
You have a motion. I didn't hear a second.
Yes, we just need to vote on it as amended.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Under discussion?
I'd appreciate some additional details regarding the grant proposal item. Exactly what is going to be requested from the council tonight? If anything in particular, is this just informational? We're going to get some information, or are you going to ask us to take action?
We're going to ask that. We're going to request that you authorize us to apply for the grant.
Can you give me some more details about what that actually will entail?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, you know, so we apply, but that doesn't mean if they award it, then we're not necessarily committed to proceeding, right?
Just a point of order. It's just to add it to the agenda, and then we uncover questions.
But I need to know if I want to add it to the agenda or not. I may not, I may vote not to add it to the agenda. So that's why I'm looking for more information as to why to add it to the agenda.
Councilmember Shaw?
So just to clarify, this item is coming to the council via the Public Works Committee. And so it wasn't clear when it went out that this was something that came up at Public Works, and our committee wanted to bring it forward because there's a deadline attached to it. And we didn't want to deny the council the opportunity to discuss this opportunity. So I, the Public Works Committee recognizes that it's a last minute item, but after hearing staff present, we agreed that the full council should hear about the opportunity, and that's what we're asking by adding it to the agenda. And the council, I would lobby that we add it to the agenda so that we can be fully informed by staff before we, and then we can decide whether to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was no motion made on that, so.
We already have a motion.
Just a call for the questions.
Okay. The question is to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
No.
I saw a roll call vote.
We could have a roll call vote. Would you do that, please?
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Dakin?
No.
Ketchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
No.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Carachini?
No.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
No.
Taylor?
No.
It's tied six to six, Mr. Mayor.
That means the mayor gets to break the tie. And this is not a finance item, so I can break the tie, and I move, or my vote is to put it on the agenda and hear it out. So we'll add that to the agenda. Okay. Moving on to public comments. Anyone from the public wants to talk about anything? Come up to the podium, identify yourself in your ward, and any subject.
My name is Jeff Wilson. I'm resident of the Leisure Manor Tenants Association in Aberdeen, Ward 1. Our forever homes are being taken from us through economic exploitation. And we've got no place to move the elderly, disabled, and bedridden. Our head and girling. We're simply asking for early notifications. High rent increases, increases create a situation resulting in homelessness and extreme stress and worry on vulnerable section of individuals. We are your parents, your grandparents. We worked hard and saved. We earned our forever home and strive for a stress-free existence. Please protect us from the economic exploitation. I ask you, how would you deal with a 40% increase in living expenses and the knowledge that in 12 months it will go up another unknown amount? How would you deal with that stress? We thank the Aberdeen City Council for considering this new ordinance and the intention to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and interested public, I'm Carolyn Hardy, who's Secretary of the Leisure Manor Tenants Association. We are here tonight to show support for the proposed ordinance requiring landlords to give at least 180 days prior notice to rent increase over 5%. Since my husband and I moved into the leisure manor here, the yearly rent increase consisted of $10 to $20 a month. Imagine how shocked we were when Hurston's sons bought the park and the new landlords raised our rent $150 a month and stopped covering garbage pickup, which is $28 every two months. That is almost $180 increase with no notes. We are senior citizens, elderly, some of us handicapped, bedridden, month fixed incomes, who glazed our families, saved, worked hard all our lives, and now want to enjoy our golden years in peace. We shouldn't have to be stressed over high rent increases every year for a piece of dirt that our house sits on and wondering if we will lose our home and become homeless because of the greed and corruption of these big corporate bullies. Not only do we have to worry about the rent increase, losing our homes, but also being threatened with $65 fine if you are one day late on the rent, parking on the street overnight, using too much water, or are just a few of examples. We are adults living in what we thought would be our forever home. The thought of trying to see and move makes me feel. All we want to do is live in peace and respect and enjoy our grandchildren for times we have left. We really appreciate the time and effort our city council are taking to come up with fair ordinance protection of us from the unfairness of the landlord. We did have a meeting with Hurston's son over Zoom where we presented them our petition asking for lower rent increase and a few other things. We gave them a deadline of June 1st to get back to us, and as of today, haven't heard from them yet. We have been working very closely with GANHOL, Washington Law and Housing Authority, and trying to get rid of stabilization pass and are getting close. Ellen Sandler of GANHOL was supposed to be here on Zoom, but I don't see her yet. But she was also going to speak to us and speak to us on our behalf. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you in passing this ordinance, being in defense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Bill, what does your T-shirt say? Oh, okay. Nice.
Before we voted on the RFA, said if we doesn't pass, our fire department is going to be in really bad shape. So what are we going to have to this grant for? And how much is that going to cost the city to get this grant? You may need it for the fire department, and still need the police department. So I don't think we should go after grants because we always have to pay money upfront. If we're going to go after grants, let's go after grants for the store park, party department, police department, things like that. Thank you.
So David Wilson, age 70. See a few gray veils around here that, though, be reminded of who Tina Turner was my back in the day. Her breakout song was "Lots of Love Got To Do With It." "Lots of Love Got To Do With It." And I'm probably in between two parts of the conversation right now. But I also am saying that there is a tsunami. And it is a tsunami of elderly and handicapped and infirm individuals that are coming to our streets, to the front doorways of all our businesses. The net underneath our bridge going south, all of them that you see and drive by every day. What are we going to do? Just trying to make you all aware of it and remind you that we have a tsunami coming on that's going to be kicking our healthcare safety debt and the net underneath bridge as well. Because right now, our community hospital is suffering, I'm sure. And after many years of the heart in, retired, one who works in the field knows what's coming down. And you all are going to have to pay for not doing something immediately. There is a tsunami coming. And so my closing, I guess, would be Tina Turner is "Lots of love got to do with it." Do you all love us? Or what? We need help. Retired people, sick people, infirm people in beds. You know, we don't have saviors that come and heal us. You all are our savior. You have these. No.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Hardy. My wife Carolyn is the Secretary of the Leisure Manor Tenants Association. I am the acting treasurer of that. And about nine weeks ago, we brought to the city council signatures of well over 100 of the residents of the leisure manor asking about the ordinance that looks like may have its first reading possibly tonight. Coming up with a requirement that any rent increases in bubble home parks greater than 5% receive 180 days of advance notice. Very appreciative. I appreciate the support of Casey Morrison and Melva Taylor for the org we live in, First Org. And special thanks to Liz Ellis, who approached me at a meeting not too, so not too long after that, and said, please come and express your support. And I think this is a good piece of legislation for the city council. And one thing I would like to point out, too, is people are always looking at ordinances, laws, and so forth, and they see a problem, and the solution many times is just throw money at it. Throw money at it. I look at this ordinance as a way to help solve a problem that isn't going to cost the taxpayers. So I think it's well thought of. I'm very glad that it's coming forward. And I want to voice my very full support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments they want to make on any subjects? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda contains a minutes from the May 10th meeting, accounts payable, and payroll. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion was made seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, Mayor's Reports next. That's me. May 25th, council members. Small City Connector in Cosmopolis. Are you all aware of that? I think I sent everybody notice of that. Okay? May 25th at 5:30 at the Cozy Lions Club. And for anybody that's wondering what I'm talking about, that's Association of Washington Cities event, where they come down and meet with local governments to discuss what any subject. Most of the cities use Association of Washington Cities insurance programs and legislative information and all those kinds of things. So they like to do this every so often. With COVID, I think this is the first time in quite some time that they've done this. Let's see, moving on to bikers visiting our town. Grace Harbor is actually much more colorful than it sounds, especially at the end of July, when the golden sun fills the azure skies, arching over verdant valleys, piney woods, tawny shores, ruddy docks, cranberry bogs, and circuline waters. Watch for the Green Lantern, the Red Cedar, Blue Beacon, Lemon Hill, Golden Dragon, Orange Julius, Blondie's Dog, Teal Duck, Pomegranate, Red Apple Market, Cranberry Museum, Purple People Eatery. And the route will take you along the harbor itself and up into the hills above. That was written by one of the locals here that you might recognize. Betty and Bobby McCracken wrote that. And it's the Cascade Bike Club that'll be visiting Aberdeen this summer during July 30th through August 1st. This event looks like it will bring a lot of folks to the harbor. For more information, go to the website, cascade.org node slash 80128. I can't even, I don't even know if I've ever seen a website like that. But anyway, that'll be a fun event here. And I've contacted them to see if there's anything we can do. I know Stacy's also reached out to them from the park's point of view, and I think Public Works has also. So we're going to try to do whatever we can to make that a memorable event for. AWC Conference comes up June 20th through 23rd. Is there any council members that'd be interested in going to that? On June 22nd, they have their annual business meeting. And if there's council members that want to go, we can have three council members vote during that business meeting on any of the subjects they bring up. So I just want to make sure you're all aware of that. And that's it. I'll move on to council reports. Go ahead.
I just want to remind people that the Aberdeen Sunday Market starts up this Sunday, 10 o'clock to 3 PM at the Southwood of Ottawa. Come down and support our local small businesses. And I have another thing. I would like to see a report of the city's various attempts to mitigate the homeless situation over the years with the various costs associated with different events and staff references. And I move that we, with the considerations for when it was River Street before and after the city owned it, Tassel, and the current river and state situation. I move that we ask for such a report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to have a report on the homeless costs for the last many years. A report we made on that. Is there any discussion under discussion list?
Yeah, it's just this year that we started tracking the costs. So historically, it'd be tough to pull those out. But I was also reminded of the timeline that Councilmember Reskis put together that is a really helpful guide of major events relating to the homeless community that would perhaps provide the bones for major events.
Some of the things that we could pull, that would be easier to pull, is like cost for land acquisitions or the cost for the tenants that went to Tassel, things like that.
I think there used to be a fund that we had related to homelessness. So that might be an opportunity.
A fund, okay, we'll see.
I think there was a line item.
It's not working.
Something's fishy with that.
Okay, so we have the cost for Tassel. We have everything, including the land purchases. Council was given all of that. We can bring that back out and get you that. When council closed, when Tassel closed, we don't have any expenses up until we started tracking it. So I can get you everything that we had for Tassel. I don't, you don't have anything after that, do you? But we can get you all the expenses up until the time we closed it, and then when we start tracking it.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Francie, are you intending that that would also include any costs that the city incurred based on some lawsuits the city had to fight or settlements? And I don't know if that can be disclosed or not?
We'll find out. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other council reports? Councilmember Ellis?
Yes, last night, we had the final public meeting for wards 3 and 4 to talk about the state of homelessness here in Aberdeen and to hear comments and suggestions from people. And that meeting was really well attended. And I heard a lot of encouragement from the public who've been somewhat dubious about our efforts and that the process so far has engendered some renewed faith in what we're working on to get a community-informed process for a response. And I just wanted to invite the public, our constituents. Very, very often, the phone is silent, the email is empty. We're not hearing from folks. And reach out, talk to your representatives. Let them know what your concerns are, what your ideas are, so that we can move forward together with a lot of these challenges.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Seeing none. We'll move on to staff reports, city administrators.
Thank you. I've submitted my report as part of the agenda packet. I think one of the, I would like to point out that the alley light installation project is completed. We were able, the PUD was able to install over 35 lights as part of, so all of this was part of the mayor's request to have this done. So I just wanted to inform you, so if you happen to be out and about, the lights, the alleys are pretty well lit. That's part of our increasing public safety. And also to, yeah, to increase public safety. So just wanted to alert you on that. And if there are any questions on my report, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Since we began that lighting idea, we have the city-owned parking lot by, that is adjacent to where City Drug was. We've got the lights working on that portion of the parking lot. And there's been other businesses that have actually added their own lights in the backs of their businesses. And then on top of that, with the lights we've just added, it helps make it a little less desirable to cause problems in the alleys in our downtown. So it seems to be a big help so far. Any directors have any reports? Fire chief?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the packet was a document I provided just to kind of give them a closeout of where we were at with the RFA, just to kind of touch bases on that a little bit more. You know, we thought we had a really good plan out there that was going to really create a good financial and operational sustainable product for the services. But, you know, the voters saw it a different way, and so we just need to move on from that. With that being said, there are options that we could look at if that is something the council wants to do in some different versions. We could do an RFA, but it would have to look completely different, whole new committee. The plan would have to come from scratch. There's a couple other options, contract for services or municipal fire district. But they all kind of have their pros and cons as well. But, you know, currently, the train of thought is we're going to... But you know, currently the train of thought is we're going to take a breath, take a step back. And just concentrate on ourselves as Aberdeen and move forward from there. And look at our internal operations and what can we do as a fire department? To help create a more sustainable product for the future, which is going to actually have to be a hard look at. The services we provide and are we going to be able to maintain that level of service that we're providing? So we'll just have to get the, put the gloves on and see what we can come up with moving forward. So if there's any questions on, on that or any comments or suggestions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Chief. Any other staff reports? Parks Department, fresh back from Hawaii. I don't know why.
So the weather was really good while I was gone and I think there's a correlation between sending me to Maui and nice weather in Aberdeen. People want to continue to send me on vacation because the weather there, you're not all that bad. I have a technical difficulties and I can't get my laptop to share my screen. I have some great photos of the new landscape of the police station. So if you haven't been by there, Parks Department partnered with the chief of police and myself. Freshening up the front of the police station. Now we had a chance, go by there. Hopefully not because we have to. Also, we did receive the Capital Heritage Grant. It was part of the governor's budget. So I will be attending a mandatory contract training on June thirteenth. I don't know exactly when after that I'll receive a contract, but that will be coming to you as a council spokesman so that we can sign the contract for the Capital Heritage Grant. That we received to do the planning and design for when it's in my schedule.
A question, a question on that was brought up to me and just for the sake of sharing with everybody. The Capital Heritage Grant did have a portion that required us to match. And we were able to do that, to my understanding, with expenses we've already incurred.
That is correct. So we were also reimbursed for the purchase of the building. So we've already expended, I think it was three hundred sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars. So we were able to get thirty three percent of that money back, plus thirty three percent of the cost of it. So yes, that is correct. And that is in the budget.
That's great news.
And the last thing, at our department head meeting, we all discussed this added grant opportunity. That's brought to you guys for the charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant. And we did talk about it. We had a presentation from Amerisco. And we knew that it would be short notice. But we believed that it was important enough to get it to you so that you guys could make your decision. There is a really good opportunity that we could receive this. And if we're creative with that funding, we could do things possibly like if we needed to purchase some land for parking. Near our new museum and visitor center, if we included charging stations on that property, we could use the money. There's other projects like the boat launch project that we've talked about over the years. If we're creative, we could use some of this money to also help pay for that. You don't have to obligate for your projects until twenty six. So there is still a considerable amount of time to plan for how we would like to use that money. The money needs to be expended by thirty one. So right now we're just asking you to allow us to submit an application. So that we have the opportunity to consider those projects. So. Again, we all knew that this was short notice and we weren't happy about that either. But we believed in the opportunity with this funding enough, we wanted to bring it to you all. You can also use the funding to hire somebody to manage the project over the five years. So we could have a full-time employee for five years, one hundred percent paid for by the scratch.
Thank you. Any other staff reports?
I, I'm not staff, obviously, but I'm still getting used to this new format. In my mind, I was, I was going to say something at the end of the meeting, but now I realize my opportunity may have passed me by and that should give me permission to go back to council comment.
Just this one.
So I wanted to share with the council that I'm going to be, with all the last minute information we were getting today, I didn't want to, I want to give you a heads up that I'm going to be forwarding to you an email from the Main Street Association. This is a grant that they want to apply for, for a project they want to start that they're going to call Listen Up Aberdeen. They explained it to Wes and. And what it is, is they're, they want to apply for a grant that would allow them to install. Sound system downtown. They want to start small and they want to, you know, enhance the downtown experience for people. They want to try it out. But it would require staff support in installing it because they would want to do it on our fixtures downtown. And staff certainly, you know, Director Sander isn't opposed to helping, but we just wanted to make sure the council was, was aware. If you have any questions about this opportunity that Main Street is going to pursue, the information will be in the email. And you can reach out with any questions to Main Street, but. It was an opportunity to support our downtown businesses as they're trying to bring something new. So I'll send you the email after the meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
I got the email and so I was wondering, will there be a time for council to discuss this?
It doesn't actually require council permission. Rick has the authority to, you know, work on fixtures downtown if he chooses to. And, but this was more informational for us. If we, if we're opposed, I would certainly share that with the Main Street or the Public Works Director.
It's, it's a project that has a number of concerns for me. I don't like the idea of being downtown and, and. Being forced to listen to music or, or stories or whatever. That I'm not choosing to connect to. And I would propose that, that having something that's voluntary is a lot more. It's a lot less intrusive. It reminds me a bit of shopping mall, music and, and where we've got. Lighting in our alleys, which is great, putting cameras up. To add this, this intrusive audio to our downtown area, I, I just find very concerning. But that's my two cents.
I would suggest that you set up a meeting with Will on that and let him know your concerns.
Rick.
And I think they're aware that people might have mixed feelings going into it, which is why they're very carefully trying to call it a pilot. They, they want to give this a try and, and, and see what might work for Aberdeen.
Rick.
Yeah, this, this is Will and Will contacted me a couple of days ago and asked if he could do that. It is under my discretion, but I knew there would be some competing opinions. They need to apply for the grant like next week in order to get it this year. That's why I said, I actually asked Will to come to the meeting tonight. To speak on it because I knew that there would be some differing opinions and I wanted you guys to be able to influence my decision. So I think tonight is the night that we have to have discussion on it so that I can tell him yes or no, whether or not we're going to support him putting something in the right way.
I just wanted to add that I know that Will and the Downtown Aberdeen Association was really working hard on that pilot program and. I, I'm actually supportive of it. I think it's going to reinvigorate downtown, very vibrant and, you know, for it, you know, capitalize on the, on the music.
I, I believe that the Aberdeen City Council support the Main Street application for a pilot project to air selected music downtown. Second.
Motion was made seconded. To support the Main Street project. Pilot project. Is there any discussion on that? Discussion on the motion, go ahead.
I know when I got the email also, I was kind of like, oh, this is interesting. I have to admit, I kind of had some mixed feelings about it, some positive and some like, well, I'm not sure. What kind of music are they going to play, you know? So you're going to be heavy metal blasting out of the speakers on the street or something, but. So. But I, I have a vague recollection of some other community I know I've traveled to, I can't remember right now where it was, but they had music piped out on the street. And overall, it was a positive experience. It was a good thing, but I wish I could remember where that was.
Polka music.
Might have been like in Leavenworth or something like that.
We envision it to feature the work of local artists and, and people with local connections. And that's how they want to get started out and have a, a local committee working on what, what to share with our leaders that was created in Aberdeen.
We could definitely, just in kind of creating this and designing it, we can give it a period of time and then maybe come back and reevaluate, you know, or we can. Reach out to the community or we can ask them to do a survey of the community to find out how they feel about it. So there, I think there's a lot of different ways that we can. Reevaluate it in the, in the future to see. Again, I like the idea that you're stating it's a pilot, I'm sure.
It's not going to be everywhere you go. It's going to be select locations. I mean, if you go to Safeway, you're not going to get this. Did you have another comment?
Yeah. I just prefer live music and I know at the farmer's market, people come perform and that's wonderful and at other Aberdeen. Events downtown, live music. But. Once these speakers grow up, will they become basically sound, audio billboards? Are they going to be advertisements aired? As to raise money for downtown? I just, I prefer to hear the birds and.
B Y R D. Rick.
Was, I think they're open to a lot of options. But I did tell them that I had the ability to approve it, but the council had the ability to come back and say, turn them off. So, so it will have to be something that the community agrees with, or you all can come back and make a motion that we shut them off. And it's only two speakers. It is a pilot. It's two speakers. They have to be in line of sight, so it's like a web system. So in their offices there by, in the, the Bacon Building. So one would probably be across the street in front of the museum and then possibly one down on Broadway where a lot of people are out meeting. So that's, it's a very small footprint right now and they would have to get approval to expand it, so.
Are they going to be using it all the time?
No. I don't think that they are necessarily.
I don't think it's going to be like all the time.
I think you guys can set guidelines. I think based on, based on what you tell me today, I can set guidelines.
What we're doing here today.
You know, if you want times where they're not on, I'll tell them that's, that's a, you know, something to ask us.
What we're doing here today is just expressing. Our approval to move forward with the pilot plan. And, and as far as details go, we can work on that. Go ahead, Josh.
From past events in the city like Rain Glow and the Downtown Trick or Treat, there is at least one organization that has speakers and blasts their own religious. Message. So this is something that already happens.
Okay. John.
Yes, I would like to just say that I support this project one hundred percent. I think anytime you can add music to a downtown project, you're doing a good thing. Thank you.
So says a wonderful jazz musician. Okay. Motion was made and seconded to approve the pilot program as described. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Moving on to item ten, request for council action. Finance Committee, right, Chair report by council member, Ericini.
Mr. Mayor, this evening I'll be stepping in on behalf of the chair. She is out of the area, although I think she's still on Zoom right now.
Yes.
Finance Committee met this evening. One of the items, the first item up is a discussion item. It's a report from the Finance Committee and the City Administrator requesting to reprioritize city hall security needs. In this year's budget, the city council approved the purchase and installation of a fence around the city hall employee parking lot. City Administrator is requesting to postpone this project and instead dedicate the funds towards the installation. Of new security door locks in the city hall lobby and first floor of steer wells. And I move that we accept this report.
Second. I second.
Motion was made seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion.
I was just curious, have there been any deaths or vandalism recently in the city hall parking lot?
When we first were putting up this fence, it was, we were dealing with a whole lot of catalytic converters. And the idea about budgeting that money was to protect our fleet vehicles. It kind of dried up as soon as the companies that were buying the catalytic converters stopped buying them. So now there's not as much in the market for them. So there's less danger of our cars being ripped off the catalytic converters. So the idea was that this makes more sense because what's happening with our, our security, we, we're still in the same locks from twenty years ago. So there's lots of keys out that are probably unaccounted for, you know, the employees leave, may not get them back. So the idea is to secure the building and add cameras. Right now we have, we have a lot of systems, but they're all standalone. Nothing works together. So the idea is to bring one system in, that could. And everything, including the downtown cameras. So it just goes a way more robust system.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So we, we have had issues in the building. Most particularly the brick through the window in the lobby. We've had issues here on the third floor. Because the third floor was always the public restrooms. And. It's usually pretty quiet up here on the third floor and sometimes there's just one person up here in their office. And so. I've been a huge advocate of, of safety to the, our staff for quite a number of years. We did considerable remodel. To the. Down in front of the finance department. To make it more secure and safe for the staff. We did security remodel over in the courtroom so that it was safer for staff. And so the last place is, is a couple of spots here in the city hall building that still need some updating and. Particularly the locks in the, in, in the third floor. Items, so that's what we're pushing for now. We found that's more of an issue at this time than the parking lot. So that's what we're asking for. I don't think so. There is.
You know, to accept the report, but I have a point of clarification or information, question. So. Should we have a motion to approve letting the city administrator?
So should we have a motion to approve letting the City Administrator postpone the project and then dedicate the funds to the installation of new security door features? Because this was kind of a discussion item about, are we going to have something come up later that actually approves it or should we prove it tonight?
It could come to the next meeting and we'll just bring it up. Or yeah, we just, we just want to give you guys more opportunities. You'll see more discussion items now. We want you guys to have an opportunity to discuss this council before we bring them up, bring them to your approval or first reading.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shaw?
And if we feel like our questions have been asked and answered in the moment, there's nothing to stop the council from making the motion and doing it tonight.
Correct, absolutely correct.
There's currently a motion on the table to accept the report that's been seconded.
Okay. Motion was made seconded to accept this report. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, so if we accept it, that gives the authority. Yes, okay.
Move forward.
Let's do it.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is another discussion item, a report from the Finance Committee and the City Administrator to revise AMC, which I'm pretty sure stands for Aberdeen Municipal Code, 2.20 elected officials to comply with current slash standard practices for council pay. I move that we accept this report.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this particular item was brought forth to revise. First, I noticed that the current salaries weren't codified, so that was the first change I had to make in this. And then the second was, or another one was that we, it was first brought to my attention that we didn't allow for elected officials to waive their salaries. So that's how this whole thing started and then it just kind of evolved into what you see before you. What I also noticed was that council members are paid differently. And so one of the proposals I'm making is what we are currently paying, we would, everyone would get paid the same. So for your time, so this would also even that out. So right now, we're looking into that. We are working with, because it is state constitution that we're facing here with the change to salaries, which would just make it so that everyone would get paid the same. Our attorney is currently looking at that. I spoke with her on Monday or Tuesday. And so she said, she kind of opened that up, that state constitution, that we're going to have to look at that to make sure that we can make it so all the council members can get paid the same.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Public Safety, Chair Report by Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety met this evening at 6:00 PM. And I have two brief reports from the chiefs, beginning with the Aberdeen Police Department. The activity report for year to date 2023 is 12,400 calls, which is aligning with the numbers from 2021. And personnel, they have one police officer in week five of his training and one starting in three weeks. There are two entry level police officer candidates with conditional offers and are in the background phase. And there's one police service officer who's waiting to start the corrections academy in three weeks as well. So they'll be beginning chiefs interviews the first week of June.
Where will that put us?
I think, I think it gets us pretty close to just one down. Is that correct, Commander? If everybody comes on board and makes it, then we'd be just one officer down.
Boy, it's been a long time since we've been that close to full staff.
But the two new ones don't get to go to training until next year. That's the caveat to that. But we're getting closer. I mean, it's encouraging. I consider it very encouraging news. And from fireside, the staffing update, the fire department is currently, they currently have four vacant positions. But they do have a new firefighter, Jonas Keilich, who started this week. And they recently completed testing for some lateral firefighters and are looking for some potential hires from that eligible list. And the new ambulance for the fire department has been delivered and it will be put into service within the next few weeks. And we have a couple of agenda items this evening. We have a report from Public Safety and the Fire Chief requesting the approval of a contract for services between the City of Aberdeen and the Aberdeen School District for a summer high school firefighting training program. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to thank the council. This is a great opportunity for the city and the kids participating in the boot camp.
It's a good way to reach out to our youth and try to get them on board ahead of time a little bit to maybe become a firefighter. Or an EMT. In Aberdeen.
In Aberdeen, yeah. We're going to make them sign a contract.
Okay, moving on. A report from Public Safety and the Fire Chief recommending the City Council authorize the surplus of fire department vehicle number 142, a 2007 Ford ambulance, where proceeds from the surplus will be deposited into the emergency services equipment rental reserve fund. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Chair Report by Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. This first item under Public Works, I'm probably not going to do it right. I think it was intended to be on here as a discussion item because this is an unbudgeted expense. And I think Director Sander wanted to bring it to our attention and get some feedback from us before proceeding. We had a good conversation about this remote control operated rotary mower in Public Works yesterday. I think the guys anyway are going to be lining up trying to figure out how to make it work. But we wanted to, Rick, can I turn it over to you to explain?
Yeah, absolutely.
We certainly can adopt this tonight if the council wishes, but I think Rick intended to bring it for discussion because this would require a supplemental budget.
Yeah, this is, it's actually a remote control mower. Mower is about twice the speed as our string trimmers, our employees and/or excavator motors. Can mow on 50 degree hillsides, which is our most dangerous area to mow with an excavator or with our employees. And it burns about half the fuel. It's not a total, it doesn't have to be a total supplemental budget. We were able to, we budgeted, I think for about $40,000 worth of equipment, small equipment in the street department this year that we were able to get FEMA reimbursement for. So that, although it's not new money, it's still a supplemental budget because we're using it for something else.
But it's not a general fund item.
That, that stuff is. That $40,000 would be, that's the street department, Stormwater and their general fund. That's the, so there's no money coming out of general fund for those two items. We'd split that across all the departments. So Stormwater and the street would go together and pay for it out of the funding that they got reimbursed for. Water, sewer and industrial water all have utility funds and reserve accounts and all would use it. Lake Aberdeen is industrial water. The reservoirs are the water department. The sewer department has lots of transmission line and their pump stations that we'd use that. It's an awesome little mower, but it's a lot of money, $73,000 for this mower. I wasn't, I wasn't a full fledged believer in it at first. We've had three demonstrations. We let our supervisors run it. We've had a number of meetings. I wanted to get buy-in from everybody before we brought it here. And then also, we're not, we're not bringing this forward to buy it today. We're bringing this forward as a discussion item. So you all can have a chance to look at the report, look it up on YouTube and see what it does. So I think that's the way to sell it to you, is for you to see it on YouTube and see how it goes.
What's the typical life expectancy of a machine like this?
They say 10 years.
10 years, that's pretty good.
And it's, most of the wear parts are easily replaceable. It's like a Yamaha motorcycle motor is basically what they're using.
Gas-fired, gas-powered?
Yep, yep. So get away from the diesel and goes to gas. So Dan?
I think our discussion also included some questions about, is this going to save time? And Director Sander said, absolutely, it's going to save staff time that can then be reallocated to other things they're chronically behind on.
Right now, we're, we got three mowers out, two excavators, and we got our string trimmers out with our summer help. We can't keep up. It's a fine line. If we mow too soon, then we have to mow again before we can spray. If we wait too long, the rest gets too tall and creates sight distance problems. So we wait as long as we possibly can, then we throw everybody at it for a couple of months. This would allow us to start sooner, mow faster, free up our man-hours for other things. I'm not asking for more people. This would allow us to mow faster.
Is this something that would benefit the Parks Department, like the hillside that's by Sand Ben?
Oh, no. We're not doing nothing for the Parks.
Well, maybe they want to go in on it too, you know?
I offered her that and she said no.
No, I offered some old bleachers.
Yeah, she tried to trade me bleachers. And I told her I didn't need any bleachers. We always help the parks. Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Rick or discussion on this item? So motion was made.
No.
No? Okay, good. So it was just a discussion item?
Yeah, and I intend to bring it to the next meeting for, as a motion.
Okay.
Was there a motion to accept the report?
No.
No, okay.
So item number two from Public Works is a report from the Public Works Committee and Public Works Director Sander requesting authorization to sign Task Order Number 14, which is part of the Third Avenue Road Repair Project with HDR Engineering Incorporated. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report.
Jan, we pulled this one yesterday.
I told you I was going to pull that up. I'm going to totally forget to do that.
We definitely want to repair the road on Third Avenue.
Thank you.
But we are, we are getting reimbursed from FEMA and it turned out that since it's arterial, FEMA is refusing to repair the road. So the road cost is like $4,000 or $5,000. It's the slide that is the big cost. So we have to go through our scope of work and remove all references to the road and just have it as the shoulder slide repair. And then we'll be on the hook for the $4,000 or $5,000 for the road. So we're still going to get $250,000, $300,000 for the repair, but we just have to jump through their hoops.
So I'm sorry I didn't amend the agenda. At the beginning of the meeting, I move we pull report number two from Public Works.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to pull the previous motion and pull this report number two from the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three from Public Works is also a discussion item. We would be asking to bring in an ordinance currently are allowing aluminum alloy conductors and feeders. I'm going to let Director Sander speak to this one, but currently in a nutshell, our ordinance only allows us to use copper. And as we know, copper is a prized item by the San Jasper Public YCA.
I'm getting a lot of action tonight. Aluminum conductors. So aluminum alloys for wires and feeders was back in the 1960s. The alloys were not reliable when they heated up. And our city electrician wrote up the ordinance and banned them. In the 70s, the alloys got better and they were added to the state code. And we remained only in copper. So what's happened is we've fallen behind the times. Copper's still better than aluminum, but aluminum is, in the state code, allowed. The PUD uses aluminum to feed us. There's aluminum busbars in all the meter boxes. So there's already aluminum being used. And what's happening now is we are being hit at a higher rate than most people for copper thieves because we only, we only allow copper. So if somebody goes out there and steals a bunch of copper, we have to put copper back in and they go back and steal a bunch of copper. So I talked to our city electrician and he suggested that we go back to aluminum, that it's safe now. It's been safe for 50 years. We're kind of outdated. And so he's made the recommendation that we change from not allowing aluminum to allowing it. And that will, that will, you know, it came up in discussion how well the thieves know that it's copper, it's aluminum, not copper. Well, if they're pulling it from the metal, they won't unless they're going to read it and they're not. But what's going to happen is it's not pulling the wire, they're going to cut it and we're going to be repairing it instead of replacing it, so. Joshua also made a reference to maybe when, if there is a copper theft and it's in a, in a meter box where they pulled it, that we could put up a sign that says that the copper wire has been replaced with aluminum wire. So maybe we don't risk that. And honestly, it's a good idea and we'll start doing that as well.
Yeah, even stickers. I was saying a sticker.
Sticker, Matt?
Okay, any other discussion on this item?
Rick, how many other coastal cities are using aluminum?
Basically all of them.
Okay.
So I know you had some concerns about the coatings and stuff, but yeah, I think, I think even the, well, you know what? This is, I got that from my city electrician. I shouldn't have said basically all of them because I really don't know, but I can absolutely find out for you.
The oxidation from the salt air is a problem with aluminum, but you know, things have changed.
You want me to get that information for you, Dan?
It'd be nice, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
What's going to stop thieves from starting to steal aluminum and trade that in? I don't know. Is there a market for it?
The price.
There's no market. So it's not, it's not worth anything compared to the copper, so.
Councilmember Ellis?
I was doing a bit of reading on this because I'm old enough to have this built in association with aluminum wiring being hazardous. And, and so there are some major differences. The, they oxidize differently. Copper's conductive while the corrosion on aluminum is preventative and reduces the flow of electricity. Aluminum wire is more flexible and easier to work with in small spaces, but it has a higher thermal expansion resulting in greater expansion. If the wire expands too much, it may cause areas in which the wiring is spliced or joined to break. So just wondering, I know when we're talking about lifespan of copper versus aluminum, if the copper's getting stolen, the added lifespan is kind of mute. But if we replace a bunch of wire with aluminum, does that mean that it's on a shorter replacement servicing schedule than the copper?
I can't answer that. I have no idea, honestly. All I know is that the city electrician recommended it and it's already supported by the state code for just about every jurisdiction in the state of Washington. So based on that, I would assume that the state code is so stringent on everything else, I just gave it a pass that the state code would have addressed those things. So I have not done that research.
I had the same concerns that you just spoke of. And I imagine there's a few folks out in the audience there that are close to my age that had this, probably the same concern. But I was told that the formulation of, that they use now for aluminum busbars and so on is so improved that it doesn't have the problems like, at all like it used to. And if you go over to like Home Depot, you won't find a. like it used to. And if, if you go over to, like Home Depot, you won't find a copper fuse box. The only place you can get one here in town is, what is it? CED? So I, I, I had the same concerns. That's what I was told, that the formula used for making the copper is so improved.
I don't want our insurance rates going up.
But I was also told that most, everywhere is moved to copper, or I mean to aluminum. And then just to give you an example, we had a major project here in town that was done by another entity in, in their own contractors. And the contractors were moving down the, the coast, installing the, this product. And they got here and installed the project here, and then got held up because of this issue. And it held up the project for quite some time until it was remedied because they'd used aluminum, and Aberdeen didn't allow that.
I bet that was the EV chargers at Walmart.
I didn't want to mention anybody, but go ahead.
So the, this is going to change the code because the code says you cannot use aluminum, and that would allow the use of aluminum, but it doesn't prohibit the use of copper. We still have a choice. If sometime we want to use copper, we can use copper, and other times use aluminum.
Yeah. I, I used copper. I shouldn't have said anything. Now they'll be stealing mine.
What's that address?
Not telling. Okay, is there any more discussion on this item? Move on. Item number four.
I got it right here. Item number four is, in addition to the agenda, authorizing staff to apply for funding through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Highway Administration, Charging and Human Infrastructure Discretionary Grant Program. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
I
Go ahead.
I think this, I'm in favor of this opportunity. I think it will bring more tourists to the area, tourists with big wallets that are looking to spend money while sitting waiting for the cars to charge. And I just want to bring up one of the ideas that was floated in the Public Works Committee was that this might be able to be used to pay for a solar charged, a solar-powered bathroom down at the charger station.
Go ahead.
Every time I drive by the charger station over there, I'm trying to remember the exact address, down there by the color-time shop or something like that.
Tesla lot.
Yeah, the Tesla lot. There's usually, if any, one vehicle charging there. Why is there such a need for this? Why should we get involved in it? I haven't seen any information on what the scope of this would entail, what it's gonna take for us to apply for the grant, what, what are we committing ourselves to, especially if we get it? Do we have, if we get approved for the grant, do we have to do anything and proceed to use the money? I saw that we'd have to pay 20% of the costs. So I got a lot of issues and questions. It just
What we'll apply for first. Now, this is how I understand it. We're just asking the council to support us, be in the pass-through agency for these grant funds. However, we have the same opportunity as everyone else to apply for some of the funds and use them. But we also have the, the option of, of not using them, not applying for an actual grant, and just be in the pass-through. That's how I
Yeah. So the city has an opportunity to be an administrator for up to $15 million is what we would be applying for. That means that the city has an opportunity to make over one and a half million dollars as an administrator of the grant funds. We also, there is a need, a growing need. As, as most of you may know, in 2035, there is legislation that was passed that states that there will be zero emissions, no more zero emission cars sold in the state of Washington. I, I don't know the exact, like, language behind the legislation. And because of that, this would play, place Aberdeen ahead of what's, because what's currently built out right now is on the I-5 corridor. This would place Aberdeen in a, in a position to be prepared for that change with a lot of the traffic coming to the beach. We recognize that right now we have electric vehicle charging stations. There's also hydrogen vehicles that are, that are currently being manufactured and on, and right now they're more popular in California, but that we could be potentially the first to have a hydrogen fuel cell charging station as well. This grant can also be used to acquire property. So if we put a charging station on a piece of property, we could, that we could purchase a piece of property and put charging stations on it as well. That could be a public benefit. As far as the 20% match grant funds go, Aberdeen, because we are a disadvantaged community, we qualify, the Biden administration has tax incentives that we would qualify for that could pay for the matching funds. There were four in particular that applied that we, the city of Aberdeen qualifies for about three of those. Also, there is a desire. So the city, and, and again, I apologize for the lateness of this last item, but the city was approached third. This company went to the PUD. They said they were, they didn't have the bandwidth to take on this project. The county didn't respond, and so they came to us as the largest city. Other cities have expressed an interest in this particular grant, but they don't have the resources to administer the grant. That's why they came to the city. We have an opportunity with this grant funding to pay for a full-time employee to administer this grant. So that would be taken care of and as well as the grant. There is also opportunity for this particular employee to assist us with other grants as well. So I, I see a lot of win-win with this, like where we, we don't have to apply for any, but we could apply for the grant, but there are other cities in the, in Grace Harbor could just apply for the grant, and we would just administer it to them. We don't have to apply for it at all. They could be sub-recipients of it. Again, I think this would place Aberdeen with the strategic goals of the, this could really place Aberdeen to increase our tourism, to just kind of be prepared infrastructurally for, you know, the electric car movement, or, you know, for these alternative fuel movements. I don't know. Is there anything else, Rick, that you can think of?
One of the things I wanted to mention real quick, in answer to your question, you, you see one Tesla car down there every so often. Once in a while, I've seen like four of them there at once. But the reason that's it is because that's only for Tesla cars. And the, the infrastructure is in that parking lot to add more standard charging units. And, and right now, there's a lot of, every car manufacturer out there has electric cars out now.
They do make converters for Tesla stations for other vehicles. And we also have another station in the Bulling Alley parking lot where they, looks like they put in five stations for, other than Tesla.
Okay. Go ahead, Rick.
I, I think the bottom line is, and what I think what everybody's concerned about is money. It's a $15 million grant that says it has a 20% match. But, but what it is, is there's a 30% tax credits to any way that applies for money. We're tax exempt. So they added a, a new thing for us. It's called a 30% cash grant. So we're not paying anything. This is a $15 million free pot of money. And it went through legislation last year without a whole lot of planning, and now they're scrambling to give it away, and nobody's applying for it. Next year, everybody's gonna apply for it because it's gonna be, the money's gonna be available, and, and it's gonna be hard and fast rules. We're, be very competitive. Go ahead, Sam.
So I have, I have one last question. So right now, we're gonna, you're asking for approval to go ahead and apply for the grant?
We're, and if we We're just under discussion here
Okay.
for that, to do that.
Well, it seems to me that if this, if the deadline is the day before our next council meeting, we kind of need to take action tonight.
We are requesting
Yeah, so
Well, I'm sorry.
So, so if, if we apply for the grant, and then they come back and say, hey, we're gonna give you the money, we'll award the grant, you're gonna then come back to the council to ask for approval to go ahead and accept it and accept the program and proceed with the program?
We need a resolution in place that, when we apply for the grant, that shows that our city council is in favor of this.
Another thing we also asked is what happens if what you've promised about this 30% cash grant, and we're not paying anything? What happens then? And there's no penalty to not accept the money.
Yeah.
So the cash grant doesn't materialize, then, and, and something we've been told yesterday doesn't happen the way it's been explained to us. We don't have to accept the money, and we don't have to have any risk. All this is, is asking to apply for our grant, and, and if we get the grant, we can always say no.
I just want to make sure that at some point in the future, before the city commits itself to move forward on a project that may potentially cost us some money or have other effects that we have a chance to weigh in on it and approve it.
Well, and another thing is you have to find a property for this system, and we are having a tough time finding a property to place the homeless population.
I'm gonna address that, but I don't know if I'm authorized to. I know someone who has property.
She's been trying.
This grant also covers, it covers equipment, it covers property acquisition. If we bought a piece of property that had a bad roof, say, a museum building, and we wanted to put electric chargers there and put solar panels on the roof, it would cover the roof. It's, it's like seriously free money in a way that you just don't see very often. And the only reason we brought it forward was we thought it would be negligent not to, to give you an opportunity to, to consider it, because again, it's $15 million free money.
No money is free. Somebody's paying. 20% of $15 million is a whole heap of money. And it, you said it yourself, that there's things that could help us pay for that. That's not a guarantee.
The 30% is a guarantee. There's, there's two 10% adders that could get it up to a 50% cash grant, but the 30% is a guarantee.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have an employee to administer the grant?
And that's covered as well.
And we're gonna have an employee that's going to oversee the property when it's done, and that's paid for?
By the grant.
What about when that time expires?
For five years.
What about when that time expires?
At the end of five years.
That's a full-time employee that we would have to pay for?
Oh, no, no, no. It would be a project employee. It would be very clear that it's a project employee that won the grant money, and that's a very, that's a very common practice, that when the grant money is exhausted, that the, that the position is done.
Okay, so who oversees that lot, though, when it's done? Or whatever, whatever we end up spending the money on, who oversees that?
The city.
The city. And who's gonna do that at the city? We already have problems administering stuff, you know, staffing problems. Everybody's overloaded. How are we gonna do that? You know, and not only that, this really should just be a private enterprise. There's more than enough people out there that would pay to build these stations. They're already popping up everywhere. I don't think the government needs to be involved. They're not running gas stations. It's the same thing. That's all.
But that's where the money's coming from.
Councilmember Ellis?
It's been a priority of the, of the Biden administration, as well as a priority of the Washington State Department of Commerce and Transportation, to build out an alternative energy infrastructure for vehicles. And, and that's important because transportation is the number one cause of rising CO2 levels. I mean, this is real stuff. We're talking about no new gas vehicles being sold in 2035. And that may sound like a long ways off, and so what, big deal? But CO2 levels, if you look at the CO2 level rise, it's exponential. We need to be making decisions today that are going to help save some modicum of livability for our planet. And, and this is money that's coming to us basically for us to self-describe, define how we're going to use it creatively, to do things that we've been needing to do. I mean, it could include a new fire station, a new police station that has integrated charging. Some of these really expensive projects that are on our to-do list, we would not be wise to turn this money down. This is, this is one of those rare lifetime opportunities we have to really give something back to our community that we desperately. And the fact that, that the incentive is around lowering carbon emissions, to me, that's, that's really important as well, but that it helps get us infrastructure that we need as well, that's completely unrelated. That's, that's a gift.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Francie?
I understand that CAP has put in solar panels on top of their building, and they're raking in the money from having those panels out there. So, and my anecdotal experience with traveling by that charger station is similar to the mayor's perspective. There's at least one car there every time, and there are multiple cars that are off.
CAP is paying for the operation of their elevator and their HVAC system with those solar panels. 100% operation of the elevators and the HVAC with the solar panels.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Shaw?
I have a video that I'll send to Ruth in case it's some too large that maybe to share with the council. One of the most eye-opening experiences I had that was kind of a snapshot recently of how much, how many wallets travel through our town to get to the beach was the Sunday early evening on a clam tide, when there, there were Teslas lined up around the block waiting to charge to get home. And on a Friday evening during the summer, that lot is, is waiting room only to get, to get charged. And I'll send the video to the council because it was, I was, it was kind of eerie because our downtown was so quiet, and here are all these people just sitting in their cars waiting to get charged up to get home. And it's very, very, it was very interesting. And the other thing that I would say is, I know that our discussion's been all over the board, but I think I agree with just about everything I heard from the whole spectrum. Anybody who's heard me talk about Aberdeen and our economic recovery has heard me be frustrated about how we got left behind during one of the most prosperous periods economically in the state of Washington, and we got left behind. We are a community in poverty whose economy was transformed by environmental regulations that we didn't get to have a say in. And this, what I like about this grant proposal is the environment, is the rural economic development component. It is intended to target rural communities that are in danger of getting left behind as the world around us changes. All these other more affluent urban areas are building up this infrastructure, and I don't want to see us get left behind again. I'm willing to take a chance that, that the 30% match, I called Director Clemens, Administrator Clemens today and said, well, yeah, okay, $15 million, but if we don't have the 20% match, we may have, what, we don't have millions to match it. And the way it was explained to me is that because we are a rural community in poverty, we qualify for another program that will make sure we can make the match. And so it's gonna be, whoever gets hired as our contract grant writer is gonna be a very busy person, but we have an, an opportunity here to, and if they don't give us the match, then we don't take the grant.
Okay. Councilmember Katsman?
First of all, I want to say thank you for bringing this forward because I think it's important that
First of all, I want to say thank you for bringing this forward because I think it's important that, like Director Singer had said, for the council to consider this, even though we were up against a deadline. As far as electric vehicles go, I own an electric vehicle. It's about five years old and there's nowhere in Aberdeen and maybe one place in the whole county that I know of in Ocean Shores where it can be charged because it's a J1772 charger. I could probably get some sort of adapter to make it work for the Rivians and the Teslas and stuff like that, but that becomes very expensive. So there are very limited options for people with certain types of electric vehicles. Especially as technology advances, those adapters are going to change, leaving some people with older electric vehicles behind. So there is definitely a need in the harbor here for something like this. I still just have a lot of concerns with the administration of this grant and as somebody that likes to really weigh options and talk to people out in the community. I think we're missing a big piece of community feedback here because the community hasn't heard anything about this prior to today. And I know that I take a lot, I mean, I work for my ward, so I'd be interested in understanding what the what the ward thinks about this in terms of this as well as the other priorities are in comparison to it. I'm also, I'm also very surprised that the county just ignored the opportunity because I believe this is a better opportunity for the county since it's something that is necessary countywide and the 15 million wouldn't just be spent within Aberdeen. I understand that Elma is very interested in funding and I'm sure Ocean Shores is, as is Westport. So I don't know if our effort should really be to lobby the county to to take this on because they have a lot more resources than we do and Aberdeen could still benefit.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Can we roll call it?
Sure. Here are no, no other discussion. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
No.
Catchman?
No.
Moore?
No.
Mackey? You're muted, John?
No.
Morrison?
No.
Perchini?
No.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Motion fails seven to five, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next page is another item for public work.
I think we're on special agenda items. And Councilmember Morrison's presented item one.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to preface this by a little backstory. So Councilmember Taylor and I have had the opportunity to meet with members of the Leisure Manor Tenants Association and other residents of Leisure Manor Mobile Home Parks, some who are here tonight, and I very much appreciate their advocacy. Residents recently spoke to council and brought forth simple solutions that would help mitigate the impact of sudden and drastic rental cost increases that they are seeing. This particular community is hit hardest by these sudden increases due to most, if not all, being on modest fixed incomes and because of the nature of the type of homes they reside in. While they own their homes, they do not own the land those homes sit on and moving their mobile homes to another location is all but impossible because of their age and not being roadworthy. Even if they could, if this could be done, the cost to do so is exorbitant and out of reach for most residents. A simple change to lengthen the amount of notice they are given of rental increases gives our seniors peace of mind and time to assess and plan what their options are. So with that, I have a request for council to discuss and consider a proposed amendment to AMC 5.06.020 and 5.06.050 rental agreement requirements. The proposed change would require landlords to provide at least 180-day notice to renters if the proposed rent increase exceeds 5%. This amendment only applies to mobile home lot renters and I will reopen discussion.
Okay. We don't need a motion to open discussion. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. Many people are paycheck or a major bill away from being homeless. And I want to thank my fellow council members Morrison and Taylor for meeting with residents of Leisure Manor and bringing this ordinance to council for a vote. It may not be enough, but it's an important step. And and it may be that the next step is to look at rent stabilization. And I hope that the Leisure Manor folks keep us up to date with how things are going there. And if if we can support their efforts with rent stabilization, that would be great. I'm all in.
Thank you. Josh.
I would like to see this proposed amendment to not only affect mobile home lot owners, but any renter of residential property.
I think there was something with that expanding.
Legal.
Yeah, with legal. Hillary, did you have any thoughts on the expansion of this to include regular residential rentals?
The RLTA, the Washington State RCW that covers landlord-tenant interaction fairly preempts regulation of this by cities, as does the similar mobile home park RCW. So if if you want to get into the weeds on either of these things, you're going to have to look at the RCW and see if it already regulates it, which both state statutes do. So you're stepping into state territory and there's an argument that these state regulations would preempt our our laws if if our laws, if our laws are more restrictive. So it's going to be problematic either way. I'm happy to answer questions.
So in, out of respect for this request, I would suggest that the council goes forward with this request so as not to lose opportunities. And if we want to advance this to all rentals, we can take that up further and 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 make that adjustment next or down the road, but let's not.
Didn't she just say we couldn't do that?
She said that would be pressing our luck to do that and not get in trouble with the state, but.
But wasn't that an either situation?
Yeah.
Just mobile homes or all of them?
Yeah, I mean, we're really pushing it with just mobile homes, but to expand it, I think rentals, like residential rentals are at like a 60-day notification period. So to expand it to a hundred, like we would be really pushing our luck there. So because right now, as mobile home lots are stand, it's at 120 days notification period. So we feel like we could definitely play around with the addition of 60 days or, you know, the the extra months, but yeah.
I mean, the the RCW that I'm talking about is RCW 5920090 subsection two. And it says about about mobile home parks specifically, a landlord seeking to increase the rent upon expiration of the term of a rental agreement of any duration shall notify the tenant in writing three months prior to the effective date of any increase in rent. So state law requires 120 days or three months notice for any rental, for any rent increase. Our regulation would arguably step on the toes of that state statute, leaving us open to a challenge that the state has already preempted this area of regulation. So to make our law more restrictive would, in theory, invite a challenge. So I I'd caution against it. And and your city administrator and I have discussed this. You know, it's the will of the council and you could adopt this and perhaps not be challenged by it, but there is an argument out there that may may incite some litigation, so.
Is there any more discussion on this, under discussion? So I guess I'm not really clear then. Have we investigated the ability to enact this change in our ordinance?
Other, other cities, oh, yeah.
And it's saying that that we are going to go be more restrictive than state law allows?
Correct, yes. And other cities have, like Bellingham, have instituted this based on limited student housing, you know, that notification period because of the housing shortage. And that is, that is here in the resolution, that's part of that, that we recognize the state law, but we also recognize that there's housing shortages. We are, we're also facing homelessness crisis. So we're stating there's things that are feeding into us pursuing this.
Are are we going to be in a position where we might have to litigate this?
Yes.
We get sued, yeah, so.
I will let Hillary answer.
Yes, this is one of those things where if you have an interest group, say, a group that represents landlords, and I, this has happened to me in other cities where under the RLTA, the State Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, it regulates pretty much area, every area of the landlord-tenant relationship, as does this similar mobile home act. And so what you're looking at here is a situation where a group of landlords may feel that this regulation steps into something that the state has already regulated and could sue the city and for regulating something that has already been regulated by the state. It's a preemption action. And and they would file a lawsuit that's essentially a declaratory judgment seeking our regulation to be invalidated. And I've seen that in other cities under the RLTA, not having to do with mobile homes, but having to do with landlord-tenant, where groups of landlords get together and they and they do sue cities over this. So it is a potential. And, you know, you may have a a laudable justification, you may have a plausible justification for making yours more narrow than the state law, but because this is untested, you may very well be inviting a lawsuit.
So what is the state law again, Hillary?
Sure, the state law is RCW 5920090 and subsection two. And it says, a landlord seeking to increase the rent upon expiration of the term of a rental agreement of any duration, shall notify the tenant in writing three months prior to the effective date of any increase in rent. So it's what you're trying to do, but instead of 180 days, the state requires 120 days notice. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're better at math than I am. I'm good at law, I'm bad at math. Three months is what the law says. So you're right, that's 90 days. You'd be doubling it.
So this is twice as long. So for twice as long, the risk is litigation.
But there are other cities today that have extended beyond 90 days.
Yeah.
To what extent?
120?
180. I think it was 120. No, I think it was 180 in Bellingham. I'm sorry, I don't have the number on me.
Have any of them had any legal challenges?
I haven't reached out to them. As part of it, I mean, I can take that back as an assignment.
Was the only difference the number of days or was it, or was there, because I were saying 5%? When the state law raises, is there any percentage of, I don't know if there's, if the dual specifics, there's just an amount of days.
I can definitely find out that information. They just recently passed it and I don't think it goes into effect until, like, July. Yes, I will do that.
Councilmember Taylor.
So am I to understand though, the worst that would come out of it is they would have us repeal it?
Correct.
Well, yeah.
But you'd also have to pay your legal fees to do that. And in theory, if the, if the law causes them financial harm, they could make a claim that you caused that harm. Generally, I don't see the landlord groups do that, though. Usually they're just looking for the law to be repealed, for the local ordinance to be repealed.
I have a question for the attorney. So you you're referring to landlord groups. However, any individual landlord could challenge this, right?
Or anyone with standing. So you'd have to be someone who arguably this local ordinance impacts in a negative way. So it could be the owner of a property with a mobile home on it. It doesn't have to be a group, sure.
Does this legislation currently only impact one mobile home park within Aberdeen?
This would, this would impact all mobile home parks within Aberdeen.
But how many are there?
Yeah, how many?
I, I will refer to Director Scott.
Three.
Well, I'm not excited about inviting any lawsuits.
No. Any other discussion from council?
Yeah. I also have a question of our legal counsel. So what, what is the ability of the city to regulate rent increases? And is that perhaps a more is that perhaps a way to go where we wouldn't invite a lawsuit, given the way?
You're dipping your toes into some pretty complex legal territory, but the the general premise that we're looking at is if the state has regulated any area, whether that be landlord-tenant law or mobile home tenant law, a city may not enact an ordinance that is more restrictive than the state ordinance. And that's true in criminal law. That's, you know, that's true across the board. It's just a general concept. So the state has adopted, and I keep calling it the Mobile Home Act, but that's because it's called Manufactured Mobile Home Landlord-Tenant Act, which is a total mouthful, but it's RCW 59. Dot two O. And they've also got the Landlord-Tenant Act, the RLTA. So between those two chapters and the RCW, the state has fairly well regulated these two fields of of law. And and that's for good reason because the state wants to make sure that tenants and landlords both have significant protections under the law. So if you're going to adopt any sort of regulation that tinkers with rent or the timing of rent or even installment payments of rent, you have to first look to those two chapters in the RCW to see if the state has regulated those areas. So there are pockets and I I defended successfully a case in Burien where Burien added some regulations to their landlord-tenant ordinance that were not found to have been preempted by the state statute. But that was done very thoughtfully and intentionally to walk and tiptoe, and Seattle's done this too, to tiptoe around that state act. So when you're talking about generally regulating rent, generally, no, you can't. You'd have to take a look at the Manufactured Model Home Landlord-Tenant Act and the RLTA to find areas that have not yet been regulated if you're going to tinker with it. And I know that's a long and confusing answer, but it's a pretty complex area of the law. The concept of preemption, as well as these two statutes are very, very long and detailed. So to find areas that is permissible for a local municipality to regulate is tricky, but it's not impossible. I'm sorry, that's a terrible answer, but that is what it is.
Thank you.
Any more council discussion on this?
Is this going to be brought back later?
Yeah, this is for discussion. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Maybe the one avenue we could come across would be to mirror what Bellingham has done, just so we have an advocate if this kind of, we have someone who's already in the same boat.
Right. We just looked up Bellingham and theirs is at 120 days, so, okay.
Okay. Moving on, special agenda items to, item two for discussion.
More discussion. It's a request for the council to discuss and consider a proposed vacant building program to address the growing concerns around Aberdeen. Community Development Director Lisa Scott and her team have designed a framework that's in the packet and are looking for council's feedback on it. And you brought some guests today.
I did. So thank you very much. We brought this up at council, I believe, last month, where we were one of the things that has come out of our, I don't want to say our tour, but our homeless committee meetings as we've gone forward with the business community, the unsheltered community and wards one through, one through six. We've received a lot of feedback and one of those was some of the conditions of our downtown buildings and why don't we do something about it? And this has been a project of the mayor's as well. So we took a stab at it to see if this. So we took a step, a stab at it to see if this was something truly that we could enforce as an apartment. We're only as good on this land as the ordinance is that we can enforce. And we believe that this is something we can do that will help, um, not only make the downtown look better, but also the ordinance is focused on appointments to the buildings themselves. So making sure that doorways are sealed, bricks are, you know, brick and mortar are sealed, that roofs are in place, windows are in place. Um, but I'm gonna turn this over to our building official, John Chung, and our working inspector two, Josh Padjet, because this is kind of, they're gonna walk you through a little bit about what this is. I know there was a question from that last conversation that we had about, well, you already have this in the code, how is this different? And so they're gonna delve a little bit deeper into that with you, and then we're all available to hear your questions.
Good evening. So, as the question as to why we want to forward this is that the current guidelines under chapter fifteen ten are very vague. You do not express exactly what we are wanting to accomplish, which is why this new code will reinforce clarity. Um, Aberdeen has several vacant buildings. I said, to be completely honest, these buildings are an eyesore wonder of the town. Uh, this is a deterrent to potential businesses that may want to come to Aberdeen. They also deter business and customers from existing businesses and attract unsheltered individuals. These vacant structures have been attracting the attention of unwanted individuals who end up causing more damage to the structures in their surrounding areas, whether it is broken windows, debris, or much worse cases such as fires. Um, it says, we hope that by enacting these new guidelines, we can not only prevent more buildings from becoming so damaged that they do not bring new businesses to town, but we also need to prevent life health safety issues when it comes to the vandalism fires that are happening in these buildings.
Can I kick it off with a question? I was, um, I was wondering, I was reading that it, the area was going to be the downtown, like, parking and business improvement district, but there's so many like districts now, like, do you know where kind of the boundaries are for that?
Yeah, yeah, it's the, it's the city, it's the city boundaries, not downtown Aberdeen. I, well, actually, I think it might mirror the park, business park differently. So it's the area that we already currently have set up in the city with boundaries. Um, and it's within that area, we wanted to start here first. We know that we do have vacant buildings in other areas of the city, but truly, the, the biggest issue we're having is within the downtown itself. Um, we are having some difficulties getting property owners to respond to open entry buildings. Um, and the city does go down and board them up, um, when, when the owner doesn't respond. But we, we've gotta take a little bit more action in regards to saving these buildings, because it's gonna get to a point where they're not gonna be salvageable anymore if we don't do something. Um, this was our staff at this and looking at it, um, but yeah. Um, we want to start in that area first, and I believe, do you know where the boundaries are, is it, I think it's F? North L Street, um, to East State Street, East First Street. It's like eight through Z, it doesn't hold, it's a description.
In the room.
So it sounds like it's State Street to First Street, um, Wishcott River to L, L Street, okay.
Yeah. That's what I thought it was, uh, Councilmember Ellis.
Um, I, I think this is so necessary, and so many people are just fed up with the state of buildings that have been left to continue to just erode and compots in place at our expense. Um, but to me, there is a major loophole that I would want us to, um, to change. And that is, so it applies, um, to various groups. Unless, um, the responsible person is actively attempting to sell lease or rent the property, well, that, that applies to probably eighty, ninety percent of the.
What number are you on?
Yeah.
That's, um, under four, fifteen point four zero point zero five zero A two.
But Liz, there's another sentence to that paragraph, because that was something I was concerned about also. And it says, and they must be physically occupying the property and running the business and demonstrating by having a lease or a business license or whatever.
Well, that's my next and. Um, because if someone, if someone basically utilizes that building for storage, then they get around this. So a, a big entity could sublet, let some of the building to another part of them, their company or some other entity, they bring in some furniture and, and they met this. And meanwhile, the exterior of the building is just as horrible looking.
Well, I agree with you, that was something I was concerned about. Council, uh, we're about three minutes away from two hours. Uh, under the new rules of the council meetings, we will need to motion and approve the extension.
Oh, I still move to extend our meeting time.
Second.
Most of us, most of us made second to extend the meeting for.
Uh, to potentially an additional hour if necessary.
Okay, for, for, to extend the council meeting for an hour, any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose, motion carries.
Um, if you'd like to see changes, since we're still in a conversation, um, if you want to get with myself or Josh or John, we'd be more than happy to go over those with you and see and get the changes that you're proposing to our corporation council. And then we can bring that back, I just wanna make sure that whatever, whatever direction we go is, is okay. Um, so again, if you, did you see some changes in here? Um, please do let us know, I'd be more than happy to, to get those to legal. Um, this was purely one of those that, you know, it, it looks like government again is being heavy-handed. Um, and we understand that, we understand the property rights aspect of this, but our town is suffering. And we need to do something, we need to step up, we need to make sure that these properties are protected, the envelopes are protected, so that they can survive for the next generations to come. Um, I know that the fees can, you know, that was the last page of this. Um, and I think even though sometimes fees are difficult to swallow, um, our city administrator Clemens had a, a great suggestion, and that is, none of the money that we have would actually go to the general fund that would be raised for this, it would actually go in to the Good Neighbors Revolving Loan Fund, which would help then the property owners make those necessary repairs to their buildings. So I think that's a good stick and a good carrot. Um, I'm hopeful everybody sees it as that, I, again, I know it can be quite draconian with more, uh, you know, why, why are we picking on building owners? But again, if we want our, and this came out of, you know, our priorities, your priorities as council and our strategic plan. And that is, what can we do to help benefit the downtown, how can we make it better? Um, and the mayor was pushing really heavy on us to get something done on these vacant buildings, I know it's important to him. So again, if you see things that you think would be a benefit to this ordinance, please get them back to us so we can get them to legal and bring that back to you, um, for the, for consideration in June.
Um, my last recommendation, and it'd be interesting to hear council members' ideas on this one too. Um, the window displays for commercial buildings, um, paint windows with visually appealing scenes depicting or suggesting business or cultural activities. I, I think that's wonderful, but I, I would feel more comfortable if there was some committee that, or, or some procedure for who evaluates what's appropriate.
We are gonna do that, as a matter of fact, Stacy Barnum, our Parks and Recreation Director, um, under the mayor and to the administrator's guidance, is going to be bringing back our, um, is it our Arts Commission? And so that was, uh, having it not created, well, it's created, but having it not together yet. That was the intention behind that, is to have them be that group.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other discussion? So, go ahead.
One last quick comment, I know Lisa and I have already spoken about this. You know, it's good to have the, the carrot out there or the, or the stick, but the stick isn't any good if you really can't collect it. So, you know, I know you lean the properties, but then again, that doesn't have, have any effect until somebody decides actually sell their property. So I don't know if there's any other ways, and of course, we have to consider the legal ways, so corporate council to weigh in on, you know, what are some other legal options that we have, you know, that, um, that we can try to get the fees from the property owners who have these dilapidated vacant boarding up buildings?
Sure, I'm glad Hillary's online. Um, one of the things, we talked to her, so as, and Hillary, you tell me that I'm wrong, but one of the things we discussed is as Washington state, we cannot tax. You don't have the authority to tax vacant properties, so that's why we use a fee-based system, because it's one way we have to address those issues. And it's the same thing we run into with abatement or boarding up a structure. Um, we have to provide writing and notice to the owner if they don't respond.
Is that your mouth, Ellen?
We go do it, but our recourse is to build them, and then if they don't pay, it's waiting on the property. And that's, so eventually, you would think we'd get some money back, but yeah, you're right, it could take, it could take time.
Okay, can we charge interest on the fees if they're outstanding?
I, I assume so, I don't.
If you get a judge, right, you do. Yeah, the, the easiest way to do that is to get, get a judgment, and then you'll get twelve percent per annum.
Yeah, but you gotta go to court and do that and get a judge. We can't just tack, tack a certain, you know, if this fee isn't paid in thirty days or sixty days or ninety days, whenever we start charging one percent interest a month, we can't do that.
Yeah, I haven't seen an ordinance that would allow that, I can research that, but most cities don't. Um, and frankly, I'm not sure I'd advise it, the, the lien is authorized under both state and local law. There's no provision in either state or local law that you can tack, uh, interest onto those liens. And I think the cleanest way to do that is to take your lien and go to court with it. Um, it, it's a fairly simple process to go to superior court and get that judgment, but I, I would recommend that additional step for due process reasons.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things that I've learned, um, since we've been with that finance director, I've been kind of overseeing the finance, uh, group, and I've learned that the city doesn't have a collections agency that we work with. So that is something that I am currently trying to bring on, so hopefully, we'll have something to bring to you in the next couple meetings, um, to, for our contract with the collections agency, and that may give us a little more, um, with these, these fees, a little more teeth, so.
Okay, any other, go ahead.
I have a question, just a quick comment, um, I think I've made myself pretty clear that I don't like, you know, heavy-handed government, but as has been said, this is more than necessary. And so I just wanted to thank you guys, you, you know, with such expediency and care, you guys have really put something pretty great together, I mean, a few edits that have been brought up, you know, that are worth looking into, but I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it too, that's, the one thing is, we're trying to be more diligent about going through what we're running forward so that we know we can enforce it. Um, because again, it gives the city a black eye when we have things that we struggle enforcing. So sometimes it's just minor tweaks that allow us to be able to do that, sometimes it's a whole new, uphold this program, so thank you, we appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to, I support this, well, I went through a walking tour of the downtown businesses. When I first came on to council, we, we looked at the keys to inside of many of the businesses, and there wasn't a single establishment that didn't have piles of garbage or missing tiles, or there wasn't one that was moving ready for a tenant. Because if he was, if I were gonna tend to be showing those properties, there wasn't a single one that was ready to be bannered, be even shown for business, so I really appreciate that.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Real quick, not on this one, but number four was supposed to be written through the agenda two, I think when we met in the agenda, we forgot about it.
On the zoning code? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, item number three is another discussion item, is requests for council to discuss and consider the proposed amendments to Aberdeen Municipal Code eight dot zero eight nuisance shopping carts to include a containment and retrieval program for retailers that own more than twenty shopping carts.
Okay, floor is open for discussion on this item. Uh, Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, so again, another ordinance that sorely needed to beef up our regulatory ability. As I look through this, um, I wanted to see it get tightened up too. So rather than, um, if an owner who provides shopping carts to customers is notified by the city, the lost stolen or abandoned shopping cart, um, more than three times in a one-month period, the director may, I'd like that one-month period expanded to a quarter.
Okay.
So it, it gives us a, a longer timeframe to, to basically enforce this. And from visiting this several years ago, I remember that the state code relating to shopping carts has a provision that says that, um, it basically allows a store manager to give permission for somebody to borrow a cart. And, um, and I want to make sure that we're, we've, we've made some allowance that, that if a store owner has a relationship with a customer, and they know that customer is going to bring that cart back, that they've given them written permission or something that, that allows for a cart to go off-brand.
This is more to address the carts that are all around, scattered around town. Um, I'll, I'll let Director Sanger speak to it, but our, um, Public Works team almost every morning goes around town and collects shopping carts. And, um, this would hold the stores accountable to just have a retrieval and containment, um, uh, program or process in place. Uh, currently, we collect the carts, and then we take them to our public, uh, works facility, and we hold on to them. And we do charge them to store it, and I just learned today that we have not received any money for, from these stores. Um, and so, and again, this would be for stores that have over twenty carts. Um, and that, it, it would apply to those stores, so I don't know, Rick, if you wanna explain kind of the experience with the Public Works Department?
Yeah, the, the ordinance is broken right now, so we're not picking up anybody's cart that has a permission slip. We're picking up abandoned carts in the right of way, uh, that have nobody attached to them. We pick them up, we take them to our yard, um, where we have to give notice to the store owner to tell them they can, they have a week to come and pick them up for free, so we're picking them up, collecting them for free. If they come and pick them up, which they usually don't, then we send them another letter that says you have two weeks to come and get them, and we're charging you, I think it's seventy-five dollars, uh, no, twenty-five dollars. And then if they don't, then we send them another letter that says, uh, we're gonna take these to the dump, and then we charge them a total of a hundred dollars. It's, it's three letters, it. It's three letters. It buries us in paperwork, and they're not paying the damn bill anyway. So something needs to, something needs to change.
Councilmember Ross?
So my question is, is this going to work better?
Is it going to work better? Issaquah, this is based off of, the city of Issaquah has this in place. A lot of cities are addressing it. This would put the onus back on the stores to have that in place.
They've been ignoring us for years.
There are fines within this. If they don't, if we repeatedly made them aware that they have carts, then we put them on the program, which they have to create, you know, and then it would charge them the $500 a day. So ideally, we wouldn't want it to go there. We've heard, we understand that Safeway has, will be installing a containment mechanism. So hopefully, that will work. This will also cover any future stores that may come, hopefully, to Aberdeen. And so this will kind of set something in place so that the problem doesn't grow.
I'm just a little doubtful that it's going to work, but.
Okay.
It's something, it's a start.
Yeah.
It's definitely not what I suggested.
I'm not opposed to it necessarily, I'm just questioning.
I just had a question. I think we should write this, if it's possible, that we'll pick up the shopping cart and we'll return it immediately with a bill instead of going through this administrative process where you're having to like take it back to some yard and then send a letter and then see if they come, and they don't, and send another letter. Like, I think we should just take it on the truck, right to whatever grocery store it is with that bill. And I think we should go corporate, the local folks. I mean, corporate's making the decisions a lot of times.
That was one of our options, and we chose to go with something that was already established, because we didn't want to reinvent the wheel if something else was working. You know, our idea was you give us a locked-out area, we're going to drop the cart off in your parking lot, and we're going to take the invoice in. To Debra's comment about we're not getting paid, we still have the invoices. And as soon as we have a collection service, we intend to collect.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my concern, is that the city would be doing work for these corporations now. That was my concern with that particular approach, is that now we're collecting. Now, they would, then they're not motivated to hire out their own groups to collect the carts. And so that was the thought, but we will definitely keep that in mind.
I actually like Katie's proposal, but this one is fine too, I think. Just for the public benefit, how many, what's your daily average for carts over at the lot at Public Works?
I don't know what we are now. We were averaging between five and 10 a day. At one time, I think we had 400 at our yard. So it's a big deal. We have to, we call it the shopping cart rodeo. They have to move them, they have to keep track of when we pick them up so we know how long they've been sitting in our yard. And then we have to ribbon those off and send invoice off. I mean, it's, it's not a well-written nuisance ordinance.
Could you give me a rough estimate of how many employees are sent out each week and how many hours they work on just shopping carts?
The city council approved a downtown cleanup person. And it's a provisional FTE, our bottom range 13, I believe it's around $22 an hour. And we put somebody with him at all times. So there's two guys out downtown, and that is part of their regular duties, motivating the homeless to move off our sidewalks every morning. They do cleanups down there at the camp twice a week. I mean, I saw your video, and I agree, it's disgusting, the garbage there. We really are down there twice a week picking it up. And it's almost like they're angry, and they won't, we give supply them dumpsters, they won't put it in the dumpster, they'll throw it on the ground and kick it around. I mean, it's, this is not really a Public Works mandate. We are doing it without complaint, but yeah, we'd like, you know, some help as well.
Well, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. It's thankless and can be disgusting. So thank you, and I'm really glad this is coming forward, if it helps a little bit, that's a positive step.
If the council would like to explore that, I'm happy to simplify it and make it that way. If you guys are, if you guys would like, again, this is discussion, this is the time to kind of really design this, so.
Councilmember Ellis?
I prefer staying with the way it's written because that way staff is in control of their time rather than, okay, we've got a cart or a truckload of carts that have to get delivered to three different stores. We, so now we're going to three different stores for one cart here, two carts there, plus going in, checking in with the store manager and all that waiting time. I agree that the burden should be on the stores to go out and collect their own carts. And if the city's involved, that it minimizes our time and maximizes the payback to cover at least some of our costs. And hopefully, any revenues that come in go towards staff costs.
I think where we got on this ordinance is because the idea of picking up a cart and taking it right back is punitive. They have no, Safeway doesn't have any say if somebody's going to drag their cart offsite. And as soon as they drop it, five minutes later, we could pick it up and take it back and say, you owe us $100. That's punitive. Doesn't give them an opportunity to come up with a plan. We're trying to force them to come up with their own plan to address their carts. We don't want to be in the shopping cart business. We don't want to pick them up, we don't want to drop them off. We want them to come up with a plan that deals with it. And Ruth has implemented fees, strong fees at the end if they don't, that will also be available for collections.
I'm biting my lip. Any other discussion on this subject? Seeing none, we'll move on.
All right, we did have a council member that left the meeting, so I just wanted to notate that. I don't know if we need an excuse, but Councilmember Perchin is not coming back to the meeting tonight. Is traveling and isn't able to stay any longer than the intended end time tonight.
So noted, thank you.
And item number four, we're removing that, so I make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
A second?
Motion is made seconded to remove item four from the agenda. Any discussion?
When will that be brought back up?
I believe in June. The 14th, the first meeting.
Oh, the next meeting, okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions.
We're going to move that after a public hearing.
Okay. We have it written on the agendas, a little upside down here, so.
Much time has passed.
We're going to move on to the public hearing first, then we'll come back to the ordinance.
Thank you. I'm not used to public works being first. That's my excuse. I did not offer anything. A public hearing referencing Resolution 2023-15 on a revised and extended six-year transportation improvement plan for the years 2023 through 2029. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is made seconded to open the public hearing on the transportation plan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries, public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to speak on this, come up to the podium, please. Say your name and your ward number, and you have three minutes. Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Public hearing is now closed.
Second item, a public hearing, it's from Public Safety. A public hearing on Deal Number 23-05, An Ordinance Making Possession of Legal Drugs A Gross Misdemeanor In The City of Aberdeen.
You got some legend drugs.
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're right. Legend drugs, a gross misdemeanor in the city of Aberdeen. I move, we open the hearing, public hearing.
Second?
Motion is made seconded to open the public hearing concerning legend drugs. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries, public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, come to the podium. Say your name and ward number, you have three minutes.
I move, we close the public hearing.
Second?
Motion is made seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries, public hearing is closed.
I think item three is mine, and it's an item from community development. And tonight, we have another required public hearing on the Shoreline Master Program as part of the updating process. And I'll cover up on the public hearing in just a moment, but Director Scott wanted to do some introductions because we have a quick presentation on this for an update.
Thank you. The city is in the, we're working with AHBL, our contractors, who did our big massive Shoreline Master Program initially. And every eight years, we are required by state law to update that Shoreline Master Program. So the city of Aberdeen has been in the process of performing its periodic review of the Shoreline Master Program. It's on, as I mentioned, is on an eight-year schedule with the legislature. The review ensures that the Shoreline Master Program stays current with changes in laws and rules, remains consistent with other city plans and regulations, and is responsive to changed circumstances, new information, and improved data. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nicole Stickney, who's been patiently waiting online and is our consultant with AHBL to go through a little bit about what we're working on. On the back table, for those of you who don't have all of the information, maybe aren't able to access it online, you can always contact me, but there is a sheet back there with a link. And you can reach that on the front page of the city's website. There's a big thing on there on the Shoreline Master Program. There's a link, and all of the documents that have been prepared thus far are available for review. And the public comment, even though tonight is a public hearing, is good, is open until June 22nd. So there is still time to make comments. So with that, Nicole, you are up.
Thank you very much, Lisa. My name is Nicole Stickney. I'm joining you from AHBL. As she mentioned, we did do your previous comprehensive update. This is a periodic update. This is a joint public hearing tonight, which is co-hosted by the Washington State Department of Ecology because we are using a joint adoption process. And I just have a few quick slides that I'll share just to give you the information that you might need down the road in a month or two when we bring this back for your action. So the state law does require the city's Shoreline Master Program to be reviewed on an eight-year schedule. You might go, hmm, and spend less than eight years since we last worked on that. And that is in fact the case, but the way that we are now falling into a pattern, it will be another eight years after this time, June 30th, 2023, being our current deadline. It'll be eight years or 10 years, I think they've changed it to, moving forward. But it has been fewer than that many years since our comprehensive update, which really means that we don't have a whole lot of work to do at this point. We can make light work of it. We are using a checklist of all the rules and laws that have been adopted so that we can compare our SMP locally at Aberdeen with what has happened at the state legislature. And then where drops, gaps exist, we've drafted proposed amendments. And you've been provided those, we've used red line strikeouts and additions. Just quickly, by way of background, the Shoreline Management Act is nothing new. It was passed in the early 70s. The state legislature did issue new rules in 2003, and that's what promoted or sort of instigated all of the comprehensive updates that took place a few years back. There's three general policies related to the Shoreline Management Act shown on my screen. Shoreline, our master programs are the local programs that implement the Shoreline Management Act at the local setting. It serves as the city's and the state's plan for managing shoreline areas. So the local SMP actually becomes a part of the greater Shoreline Management Program for the state as a whole. As you read through it, you would notice that it establishes goals, policies, and regulations pertaining to shoreline protection, use, and development. And there's some other components as well. In terms of the local and state roles, the city of Aberdeen does lead the shoreline planning within the city and has to do the permitting. Also is responsible for updating the SMP and keeping this program current. And then ecology's role is to provide guidelines, and they've also provided funding and technical assistance for this update effort. So you have received a grant from the Department of Ecology to pay for our efforts assisting you through this process. One key concept is no net loss. And I just wanted to highlight that we are looking from the baseline that was documented in the Shoreline Inventory and Characterization Report from the time at which you had done your comprehensive update a few years back. So that doesn't mean that we're looking back, what was the shoreline like in 1971? Instead, it's back from that date that that documentation was done because that really was very descriptive and provided that information that could be relied upon. In terms of the proposed changes to the SMP, there's really five things I wanted to highlight here in terms of the SMP itself. First, we've gone through, we found areas where we can improve readability, corrected any typographical issues, made some general revisions. We've also updated or added various definitions. We added those exceptions for certain local review that were passed by the state legislature. We had to make some changes according to the Ocean Resources Management Act and the Marine Spatial Plan for Aberdeen, and we used the ecology guidance for that portion. We added a 90-day target for a local review of projects by Washington State DOT. In terms of the proposed changes to the critical areas regulations, those are the items contained in Appendix Two. Again, we cleaned up the typos, and we also updated some references because your city's critical areas ordinance has since been amended since the SMP was last worked on. So we wanted to make sure the other references were all correct and that everything was in alignment. In terms of what isn't changing, I want to provide some reassurance. Those previous update that I've mentioned a couple of times here tonight, that effort was extensive. This time around, the proposed changes are much more narrow in scope, and all are consistent with ecology guidance. I also wanted to highlight that ecology is not funding any additional scientific analysis of shorelines or any more study at this time or fieldwork investigation. So we've not been out to look at the condition of shorelines or anything like that. We're also not proposing any changes to the mapping in your city, and there are no changes proposed to any of the development standard. So setbacks, height limitations, lot widths, lot coverage, all of those things are going to remain in effect. So somebody who would apply today under the current SMP for a permit and then apply maybe in a couple of months when the new one is hopefully adopted, they're not going to see many changes in what would be required for them under their permit. A lot of information is available right now on the city's website. We have provided a whole host of materials there so that it's out for public view and consideration. And there was also public notice of this joint hearing posted in the Daily World. We also sent information out to agencies so that folks would know about this hearing tonight. I do have the map available if there's any questions that anyone has on that, but of course, that's in your materials as well. And at this time, I typically will go over any of the comments and summarize anything that's come in. With the timing of this public hearing, we really haven't received anything yet. We did open the public comment period just two days ago, so it's probably not much of a surprise. So the comment period is open for a total of 30 days. It did open on Monday, and actually, I think maybe we added an extra day or two with federal holiday, so. It did open on Monday and actually, I think maybe we added an extra day or two um with federal holiday, so.
That's his garage open again.
So it will wrap up in in a date in June. So we're asking you tonight to hold the joint public hearing after um the comment period closes. We'll be sending materials off to ecology for an additional determination, that's where they go through their own um work and their own um analysis and and come back to us and tell us, hey, if there's any changes that they're proposing that we need to make beyond what we've already prepared before we bring it back to you. Um, so we will be bringing the item back to you um in the future for your adoption. And I wanted to highlight also that the SMP is not in effect until it's accepted by ecology. So the local role is to adopt the SMP, but then it has to be accepted by ecology, it's a joint process. And that concludes my um presentation tonight. The other request I would make is to um invite folks who might be participating remotely to provide their comments. I think that would be an important um thing to 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 do if you're able to facilitate that. And I thank you for the opportunity to present this to you tonight, thank you.
Steve, thank you.
So point of order, um Katie brought this up, but it wasn't seconded, so.
I haven't opened the public hearing. It was just a presentation. At least that was my attempt.
All right, so for this item, um we do have the public hearing that is taking place tonight along with any um comments that will be accepted through June twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. So I move that we open the public hearing.
Motion was made seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion?
And under discussion, I believe anyone that might be in the audience on Zoom can raise their hand and the deputy city clerk can move you over to make a public comment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this, come to the podium. Uh, state your name and ward, you have three minutes. Is there anyone on this Zoom that wants to speak? Raise your hand.
Seeing nobody, I move we close the public hearing.
Motion was made seconded.
I do see a hand raised at this time, thank you.
Just wait one moment and we'll move you over the participant. Okay.
Uh, there we go.
And you should be able to unmute yourself at this point and provide testimony.
I think I'm unmuted, is that right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm Anne Sadler and I'm the president of the Manufacturing Association of Manufactured Home Owners, better known as AMHO. And I'm sorry that I'm I'm bursting in during this uh public hearing portion, but I tried to speak earlier uh when you were talking about the ordinance for leisure manner in Aberdeen.
I could interrupt just quickly, unfortunately, this is a public hearing for the shoreline master program.
Okay, is there some way that um I can communicate with you uh other than?
Yeah, after the meeting, if you want to reach out to a council member or any of the city staff.
Okay, I will do that. I I unfortunately, I was not allowed to speak previously, so that's why I'm interrupting and I apologize for that.
No problem, no problem, we will follow up, yeah, make sure you get your questions answered.
Okay, thanks so much.
Anyone else?
Seeing nobody further, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to close the public hearing, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed.
And we're on to appointments, so I'm going to kick it over to you.
I have one more, ordinance, second reading.
Sorry, I know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but this was out of order, but I just thought it was important to have a public hearing first. So under ordinances, this is the second reading of bill number twenty-three dash zero-five, an ordinance making possession of legend drugs a gross misdemeanor in the city of Aberdeen. I move we adopt the second reading.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt the second reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, second reading is passed, will be the third reading next council meeting.
Mayor Shape, I move that we suspend the rules and consider the second reading the third and place this bill in final passage.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to suspend the rules and place this second reading, make it the third and place it in the final passage. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'd rather wait because Chief Green is not here and I have some questions I wanted to pose to him. Unless Commander Kimmons thinks maybe he could stand in and address them?
On the legend.
On the legend drugs thing?
We have our attorney.
So uh the legislature, I guess I'll address this to our council, Hillary. Um, the legislature just passed a law in special session that deals with this issue. Uh, and the city is proposing an ordinance. Is our ordinance basically in conformity with the the change in the law that the legislature enacted? Are we more restrictive, less restrictive, or or what, what are our options too? Because I don't think we can be more restrictive than state law.
Stan, I can answer part of that.
Yeah.
So this is going to sunset and the state law uh is what will take effect, so we will honor that. This will only be in for about a month.
Oh.
And and so here's the, here's the problem. When the legislature convened for their emergency session and they adopted the second engrossed bill, the effective dates were specified for some provisions of a very, very long bill and not specified for others. So you have some portions of the state law kicking in on July first and some not becoming effective until August fourteenth, which is why you see that this ordinance before you sunsets on August fourteenth, just so that the city has full coverage throughout that time while some of the law is effective and some isn't.
Tyranny.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good question, it's a good question.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, that's right, we.
I move that we approve the third reading and place it in final passage.
There you go.
And then that's all.
Second.
The second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the third reading. Roll call vote, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion approves eleven to zero, Mr. Mayor, this will be ordinance six-six-nine-five.
Thank you. Been a long day.
Now it's time for you to appoint people.
Okay. Had a few applicants for museum board candidates, spent a lot of time reviewing them. And I would like to appoint Scott Beatty to the Board of the Museum and History and ask for the council's uh approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve Scott Beatty to the Board of the Museum and History. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I had heard from some of the other people who were interested in being appointed and they hadn't heard back on the status of the appointment, so would someone follow up with them and let them know?
Yes, I could do that.
I I know about my student list. They were followed up with yet, because they were kind of disappointed. Now they're confirmed, I will let them know.
Okay, no.
Do we need to do another extension? Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Since we have thirty minutes worth of items still for council to cover, that would take us until nine forty.
We can get it in twenty minutes, I think, and then we can extend if we need to, I can.
But the meeting is over in twenty minutes.
Like the regular meeting.
Five minutes more?
Let's let's make it nine forty-five.
Okay, so I move that we extend the meeting until nine forty-five, second.
Motion was made seconded to extend our council meeting to nine forty-five. Any discussion?
Somebody threatened that this was going to be a long meeting.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I have some legalese to read off here really, really quickly, so I move that we um do a couple of things here. We're going to recess and do a closed session for ten minutes, followed by an executive session for twenty minutes. Action is not anticipated after each section. The purpose of the closed sess- session is in accordance with RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-four-zero, section B, that a portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or agreements, or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress. And the purpose of the executive session is, in accordance with RCW forty-three dot thirty dot one-one-zero, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to the agency enforcement actions, or to discuss the legal counsel representing the agency or potential litigation to which any to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting at in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party where the public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency and to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real, real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such considerations would cause a likelihood of increased price. And that was a motion, if you can believe that. So I need a second.
Motion was made seconded, is there any discussion?
Do you need a nap after that?
Yeah.
Need somewhere warm.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We will recess for.
At this time, the council meeting, correction, the executive session has been extended by three minutes.
That's true.
I move we adjourn.
No, we can't do that.
I did not sign the ones that didn't go through. Perfect, thank you. In fact, I told her that one.
I'm not even going to sit.
Well, she's got to go through her spiel first before I can adjourn.
Okay.
We have a quorum, so I move we convene.
A second.
Motion has been made seconded to reconvene from our recess. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are reconvened.
I mean, we adjourn. I'm sorry.
I'll tell you the story later.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
If most have been made seconded to adjourn, if there's no objection, we are adjourned.
I'm sorry.